Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting in order. We start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the House of Representatives of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. We are going to start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Sarda.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Offner.
Here.
Mybaum.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Seaman Jell.
Here.
Senator Denver.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of March 11th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion? The minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you very much. And now we'll have the city managers' report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and the public. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And you have before you a new version of our strategic plan for you to utilize. Some folks thought the ones we had last time were too big, and others said these were too small, so Goldilocks is going to find porridge that's just right. If you'd like a different size other than this, let me know. We'll make it happen for you, but couldn't please everybody. So this is for you to utilize, and of course, we'll be distributing these to all our city staff, since all of your priorities and some of our work plan and your vision and our mission is on that document. A couple of things before you get started this evening. Last week, a number of us attended the South Dakota District 3 Municipal League Dinner that was held in Canton, and we had some interesting conversation and learned some interesting things regarding legislative changes that have happened this year. A couple of things that might be interesting to you. The public appearances legislation has changed. That language has changed, that public appearances will only be required on regularly scheduled meetings of the City Commission or City Council. However, I anticipate we'll probably leave the public appearances section on our agenda as is. It's been a good opportunity to follow through with one of your priorities being as transparent as possible, but there was a little misunderstanding as to when public appearances was appropriate or not with the previous legislation. Also, beginning in July 1st, the way you treat executive sessions has changed. There's another item with which you can speak about in executive session, and that's safety or security concerns. So if, for example, we were going to do a safety plan or an active shooter plan for City Hall or one of our facilities, we could discuss that in closed session for obvious reasons. So that's come about with some unfortunate things that have happened throughout the country, so that's another change that we learned about. Absentee voting began today for the municipal election, which will take place on Tuesday, April 4th. Please make sure that you vote and that you encourage others to do the same. The library would like to remind you that you have an opportunity to be a librarian for the day. Dana Schmidt will be encouraging folks to sign up to work at the library, to learn a little bit more about the library. So if you're ever interested and you have a really good shh, you might want to sign up for librarian for a day. Also, to celebrate Library Week, there will be a Drop Everything and Read event, so we'll encourage folks to sign up for that. If there's any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let you move on to your business.
I should add, at that Municipal League meeting on Thursday night, there was a lot of outpouring of sympathy and, I guess, thanking city staff for all the work that they've done. It was kind of an emotional experience, so that was nice to see support from our neighbors in the state. With that, are there any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we'll move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience can address the Commission about items not on our agenda. We do have one scheduled public appearance, and that is Lauren Hanson with United Way. So if you could step to the podium, Lauren. It's good to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, city commissioners, for having me here this evening to report on our collaboration to create efficiencies and how funding is distributed to health and human service agencies throughout our community. As you know, the City of Yankton in 2017 entered an MOU agreement with United Way of Greater Yankton where the city hereby recognizes us, and we hereby agree to serve as the city's external agency for the dispersal of grant funds to outside agencies. Outside agency requests that fall under United Way's primary focus of education, financial stability, and health can apply for non-capital funds using our annual funding request process. United Way invests the City of Yankton's outside agency dollars within our current community impact fund, allocating dollars to qualifying agencies and evaluating performance of said agencies. In 2018, over $350,000 was distributed to local agencies through United Way's Community Impact Fund. $37,100 came from the City of Yankton. For an in-depth report about the collective impact of United Way programs and your investment to our Community Impact Fund, I am sharing with you tonight United Way's 2018 Community Impact Report. This is also available to the public on the United Way website, www.yanktonunitedway.org. Please note that the City of Yankton is listed as a titanium-giving leadership donor when you get to the Campaign section. A lot of information about United Way internal programs and our investments to the agencies, thanks to the generosity of the Greater Yankton community. Within your packet, you will also find the second sheet is the 2018's Community Impact Fund Distribution Report, sharing the monthly allocations to our award recipients. Community impact awards are determined by the process outlined in our MOU agreement, which include evaluation of community need, impact, delivery of services, financial management, need for funding, as well as community partnerships and collaboration efforts. In June of last year, City of Yankton Representative Al Verick alongside United Way board members participated in a day-long review of 27 partner agency applications with asks for 2019 equalling nearly $491,000. Per our scoring mechanisms, 2019 awards were determined as listed on the third sheet and final report in your packet. It's titled 2019 Allocation Worksheet. As you can see, our 2019 Community Impact Budget was able to accommodate 80% of the overall funding requests from our partners. That is over $390,000 invested in 2019. That's an 11% increase from the year prior. Listed are all community impact grantees' funding scores, their base and their bonus amounts. A reminder that per our MOU, historic City of Yankton amounts allocated were not broken out during this funding cycle as they were in 2018. I would also like to note that the aforementioned $390,000 in our Community Impact Budget for 2019 does not include United Way Venture Grants, which are grants that agencies, 501(c)(3) can apply for at any time throughout the year for emergency funding or seed money or enhancement money. We usually allocate anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 a year in venture grants. That $390,000 also does not include internal United Way programming, such as Spark, Link, Big Friend, Little Friend, Imagination Library, The Big Red Bookshelf, Holiday Beds, Forty Winks, Toys for Kids, Adopt a Family, Delta Dental Mobile Program, Day of Caring, the United Way Nonprofit Center, Bridging Yankton, Make a Difference Day, Community Resource Fair, Student United Way, Stuff the Bus, The Clothing Closet, and the Yankton Hunger Collaborative. That dollar amount also does not include the services United Way provides for volunteer placement. Again, you can learn more about United Way internal programs in our 2018 Community Impact Report. For additional information, United Way's most recent 990 and Audit Report can be obtained on our website, yanktonunitedway.org, which shows 88% of expenses going directly towards community programming with a very low 6% general management and 6% fundraising expense. Now we move to 2020. 2020 Community Impact Fund applications are also available on our website currently and are open to any 501(c)(3) health and human organization focusing on the education, financial stability, and health of the Greater Yankton community. 2020 grant applications are due to the United Way's office this May 1st with our annual allocations retreat. Al, mark your calendar for June 19th. As the United Way Board of Directors and Finance Committee evaluate the results and wrap up our current community campaign drive, we are hoping to once again increase our 2020 Community Impact Budget by at the minimum 10%. Our goal is probably looking more towards 18% as an increase for next year. That being said, we are aware of a handful of agencies that will be asking for larger investments in 2020 due to increased need and expansion of their services. As you know, the community continues to grow and evolve, and the United Way of Greater Yankton wants to better position itself to meet those changes. To help our organization better understand the impact provided by the services we may or may not yet invest in, we are currently conducting a community needs assessment in partnership with Planning and Development District 3. We would like to encourage you as city commissioners and the entire Yankton community to be a part of this process by completing our community needs survey, which will be released this Thursday, March 28th, to the public. Feedback from the community survey will be a great asset in not only identifying what we as service providers are doing well, but what are the most critical needs in our community? Are there any gaps in services? What are the greatest barriers for families in achieving success? Knowing this, we at United Way can evaluate or update our investment strategy, supporting not only our internal programs, their delivery and their growth, but the collective impact of all of our community partners. Again, thank you, Amy, Al, and the city commissioners for your partnership and continued support of United Way. Together, united, we are changing lives and improving the quality of life here in Yankton. Thank you all so much for your time. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the Commission on an item not on our agenda? All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one is consideration of memorandum 19-24 recommending approval of the application from Yankton County 4H for a special events dance license for August 2nd, 2019. Number two is consideration of memorandum 19-57 recommending approval of the applications from the Rock and Rumble Committee for a transient merchant license for July 26th through 27th, 2019, and a special events dance license for January 26th through 27th, 2019. Number three is establishing April 8th, 2019 as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailers license and a special on-sale wine retailers license for July 12th, 2019 from the center at 900 Whiting Drive. Number four, going to need your help on this one, consideration of memorandum 19-58 recommending approval of the mayor's appointments to the Consolidated Board of Equalization. With that, do we have three volunteers? And one alternate? Dave Sarda? Bridgette? One more. Tony, I know you've done it in the past, and this will be your last opportunity.
I'm good. I could be the alternate.
Okay, we have an alternate. Do we have a number three? What day is this again? Seventeenth?
April 17th. I believe it's a Wednesday.
I will check my calendar and be the third if needed. Thank you. Number five is consideration of memorandum 19-67 recommending approval of the application from Martha's Crafts for a transient merchant license from May 10th, 2019 to June 10th, 2019. Number six is consideration of memorandum 19-68 recommending approval of the application from Martha's Crafts for a transient merchant license from August 1st through August 31st, 2019. And number seven is a possible quorum event on April 1st, 2019 for the West Side Park Master Planning Meeting, which will be held here, correct? At 7:00 PM? And there will be no official commission action taken. What is your pleasure?
Move approval of the consent items. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion of any of these items? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission about any of these items? All right, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Under Old Business, we have consideration of memorandum 19-54 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailers license and a special retail on-sale wine dealers license for April 13th, 2019 from Ag Farmers, and that will be at the 4H grounds at 901 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Offner.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hi, motion passes.
Number three, under Old Business, is consideration of memorandum 19-55 regarding the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for July 26th through 27th, 2019 from Rock and Rumble Inc. for the block of Third Street between Douglas and Capitol Street and a half-block of Capitol Street between Third and Second Streets. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Offner.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hi, motion passes.
Number three, under Old Business, is consideration of memorandum 19-56 regarding the request for a transfer of location and ownership of a retail on-sale liquor license for January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019 from Drotzman &amp; Portillo LLC, doing businesses rounding Third Bar &amp; Casino, to P&amp;P Lottery Enterprises LLC, and that is at 310 Broadway Avenue. What is your pleasure?
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Offner.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Number four, under Old Business, is, and the subjects you may have heard of discussing earlier when you came in, we had a study session on the proposed small cell wireless communications facilities ordinance. So this is an opportunity for us to have a public hearing on said ordinance, which is number 1020. I would ask for our city staff to introduce this item to the public. And we can also ask for a motion if anyone wishes to offer one at this point, but I think we have some changes that we're thinking about before we take that step.
Okay. Just for those who weren't in attendance earlier, the City of Yankton is looking at creating a regulatory structure to address the 5G anticipated tower system for the cell networks, basically, in Yankton. Under this type of technology, the city can anticipate over time a much larger quantity of broadcasting nodes than what we had experienced with prior generations of 3G and 4G cellular networks. And these systems can produce remarkably fast network speeds for our cell phones, for video streaming and things of that nature, but this technology does not broadcast very far. So we are going to have to have a considerably larger number of these to fully cover the City of Yankton as this network is fully rolled out. So the function of this ordinance is to address a permitting process to accommodate these poles with nodes that will broadcast in our neighborhoods. And the permitting process addresses aesthetic standards so that these are hopefully not unsightly objects as they are rolled out into our neighborhoods and across the community. So that is the function of this particular ordinance. It is a permitting process generally, and there are due process appeal rights associated with these, as well as a process for approving these applications for these particular small cell facility permits. The Commission has before it a draft ordinance that was presented at the first reading a couple of weeks ago. Since that time and meeting with staff and having input from this Commission, as well as from the folks at Verizon Wireless, there are a few small changes that I would like to bring to your attention. None of these changes are significant and allow us to make these changes without having to do another second reading, but I would like to take you through them and hopefully obtain your approval as modified before you pass this particular ordinance. The first change that was made from the prior reading appears in Section 29-5B. Under that section, we talk about what we call the shot clocks. That's the period of time that an application for a small cell facility must be approved or denied by the city, either through its administrative review process or the special review process that would pass through the Planning Commission and this Commission. Any new small cell facility structures would have to be approved or denied within a 90-day period. Initially, we had been very optimistic that we thought we could approve co-locations or SCF structures that were attached to a pre-existing structure, whether it be a light post or a power pole or something of that nature. We thought we could approve that in 30 days, but in talking with staff, we thought that yeah, the federal regs allow us to use 60 days if there's a denial, and the denial is taken through the special review process before the Planning Commission and this Commission, 30 days might be a bit impractical based on the timing. So we elected to go back to the length that the federal regulations that were implemented allow us to utilize, which is a 90-day shot clock for new locations and a 60-day shot clock for co-locations or placement on existing structures. Another change that was made was at the request of staff from Verizon Wireless. They had asked us to clarify how the tolling of those shot clock periods work if an application is deemed to be incomplete. The federal regulations are pretty clear that if it's incomplete, you can restart the clock once. If the supplemental application is still not complete, you don't restart the clock, you just pause the clock, get the supplemental information, and then the clock resumes where it left off. So that's the only change for the administrative review process. Under the special review process, a small change was made to subsection 2B to account for the two differing shot clocks. I added a sentence that says, "The review hearing and final decision shall take place within the applicable 60 or 90-day review period based upon the date the application was submitted." That was a change that was requested by Verizon Wireless and is consistent with the federal Another thing that staff from Verizon Wireless asked for under that same special review process subsection D, the way that we had worded it indicated that, "Upon issuance of the Planning Commission's recommendation, the Yankton Board of City Commissioners shall adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and take action on the recommendation at a regularly scheduled public meeting." That gives the impression that this board is acting more or less as a rubber stamp, and in reality, this Commission really would sort of function as a first level of appeal. So we changed "shall" to "may," indicating that this Commission may adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and take action on the recommendation. And this also allows a more meaningful opportunity for the applicant to come before this board and make their case, which may be contrary to the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. That particular section also recognized the 60-day alternative shot clock, which had previously been set at 30. Under subsection 3, I promise I'm just about done with these guys, where we talk about the required contents of an application for an SCF permit. Commissioner Mybaum had recommended that we include under subsection C, aesthetic compliance summary, where it talks about, "The application shall include an explanatory statement of aesthetic considerations and requirements factored into applicant's design, such as steffing, finishing, fencing, landscaping." And Commissioner Mybaum thought it made sense to add in streetscape design conformance. There are places like in the historic district downtown where we have streetlights that are of a historic feel or design, and the idea is, in those areas, the aesthetic compliance summary shall indicate that they are complying with those types of things. However, this particular paragraph was requested by Verizon that we entirely kill it. So as we move forward, this particular section may get some additional recommended potential changes, which you guys will have an opportunity to consider moving forward. Under subsection E, the application must include a written report or statement signed or sealed by, previously, we had a South Dakota Registered Professional Engineer, which explains that the SCF will be in compliance with the radio frequency emissions limits established by the FCC. The reality is, the type of engineer that would design a system like this is going to have a special certification, a radio frequency certification. They're going to be an industry-specific engineer. So I have added that clause, a Registered Professional Engineer with a radio frequency certification. Just, I mean, someone like Adam knows a lot, but I don't think he'd feel comfortable putting his seal on this, and so this change makes sense. Also, when I spoke with the staff at Verizon Wireless, they indicated, given the type of state that we have, being a relatively rural state, the design engineers who would be the people who would sign off on this kind of thing, may not be certified or registered in South Dakota. So it made sense to just take out the fact that they are a South Dakota Registered Professional Engineer and just say that they have to be a Registered Professional Engineer, so somewhere, they've got to be registered. In reality, the rollout of these things, these plans, they will have a radio frequency engineer who participates in the design, and that can be provided. It's a little overly burdensome to require that they all first get licensed in South Dakota before they submit their plans. used, we wanted a head start, so we got going as quickly as we believed there was a final draft in place, but the municipal league took a little time to clean it up a little more. In the final version that was issued in February, the last sentence of that radio frequency emissions compliance section was eliminated. And the reason was because it was requesting that, in addition to that opinion from the professional engineer, we were requiring the applicant to provide proprietary information that would potentially put them at a competitive disadvantage. And I think the reality is, if that sentence is in there, we probably won't have anyone come to Yankton. So I don't think that we need them to provide us a description of the technical objectives to be achieved, the targeted service area to be benefited by the proposed project, or a full color signal propagation map, because they won't provide it anyway. None of us are going to get into the weeds that heavily with the technicalities of the actual node broadcasting. So if you guys are comfortable with it, that section I've removed. It was also removed from the model that was published on February, roughly February 19th. Under general standards for the replacement of new poles, based on Commissioner Mybaum's recommendation, where the sentence read, "New and replacement utility poles shall conform to the streetscape design standards for the location of the utility pole," the reality is, in like the historical district downtown, we don't have specific published standards, but we do have design practices. So we've added in practices and standards to allow that flexibility. I fixed a typographical error in the requirements for the cabinet location and dimensions. The same change that I just described regarding streetscape design practices or standards was added into the section regarding painting, coating, and finish materials. Under the section 29-6, these are the permit conditions. So once a permit has been granted, this is the section that governs how they are supposed to operate. Under the section F, where it talks about the city having the right to inspect each SCF, at the recommendation of Commissioner Mybaum, I've added, "For any purpose, including but not limited to confirming its compliance with all permit conditions and the representation set forth in the permit's original and supplemental permit applications, or to protect the public's health, safety, or welfare." That is again a section where it sounds like the good folks at Verizon Wireless might want to do a little surgery anyway. But those changes made sense to me. And I don't know that they add a whole lot, because if the city has the right to inspect, enumerating the reasons why we might inspect really is kind of unnecessary, but it at least explains why we're going to be out there. So I don't think that that change makes much of a difference, but it's at least explanatory. And then, under liability insurance, we have limitations that require a certain amount of insurance coverage for bodily injury. I added a clause that says no less than, so as to not require everybody perhaps to adjust their rates down if they had more insurance, because the way it was stated, it required a very specific amount of insurance. There may be some room for this board to discuss how much insurance is appropriate. I know that was a conversation I had with Commissioner Mybaum. You guys can change the insurance limits to any amount that you'd like. I just, I don't know that I would necessarily require it to go up a whole lot more than that, considering in all other places in our municipal code where we prescribe an amount of insurance for bodily injury and death under the liability insurance area, we're about $1 million higher than anywhere else under this particular ordinance. So I would think long and hard and have a good reason why you would want that to be higher here. And then, under section 29-9, this is the last thing, there was a couple requests by the folks at Verizon to make sure that that appeal process very clearly spelled out that after it is, after an application is reviewed by the planning commission, that the decision of that commission could be appealed to this board essentially as its first level of appeal and then to the circuit court. And they also wanted a sentence, which in my opinion lines up with the decision of the FCC order, that says, "Nothing in this section is intended to require exhaustion of administrative remedies or otherwise prevent an applicant from proceeding directly to court or to the Federal Communications Commission." So it's not changing the law, it's just sort of reiterating what federal law already is based on the order. So that is the full list of changes. Sorry to put most of you to sleep. I don't think any of these make any serious impact on what we're doing, which is why I have no heartburn going ahead. If you guys approve these recommended changes, going ahead with approval of the ordinance as amended at this reading without requiring a subsequent second reading. A second second reading, if you will. Any questions?
I do have one, and I would like to go back because we ran out of time. I don't know if Mr. Winandy could address this more. I guess I'm curious if the changes that Ross presented to the commission is addressing some of the concerns you had, but you had referenced in our meeting earlier this evening that some of the code or what we have in this would put Northwestern at a disadvantage. And I was wondering if you could clarify if any of these changes helped or if you were referencing something else.
To be quite honest, I don't believe any of what was presented just in the last few minutes would change my perception or my view of the way the language is written in the draft. I think the biggest thing, perhaps from my perspective, is from Northwestern's point of view even, would be to understand how these rules would be applied to us as an electric utility versus Verizon as a wireless utility. Two completely different types of infrastructure. But yet, by the playing rules set forth in the code, the city is being told that we have to, you know, kind of apply that across the board to all utilities that take space in the public right-of-way. So, you know, could those be looked at as something that would perhaps limit the size of transformer that we can put on a pole because of the, how much it can be, how much larger it can be than the top of the pole itself? Or could it restrict the height of pole that we install at a particular location? I think I read some language in there where the city would perhaps even enforce what we would consider national electric safety code clearances, something I would think the city would want to avoid, because that's, those rules aren't in place and are interpreted by different bodies and regulators than what you guys would represent. So in my view, to answer your question, no, what was presented just a minute ago does not change my stance.
Thank you for that, because I was just curious what your concerns were. So I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Great question, thank you.
Ross or somebody else answer maybe how that's addressed.
I guess kind of on that too, since Brad didn't get to finish earlier, are there other examples? I just read this, that it's so directed to small cell towers, and I'm not really thinking of what all else it's affecting. And I don't know, Dave, if you have answers on that. To me, it doesn't, the way I, I guess I went through it, it wouldn't affect Northwestern Energy, but apparently it will, or even anyone else.
So I think the language is such that, in the FCC rules, it says that we can't regulate small cell facilities in a manner more restrictive than we already regulate other utilities. We tried to adopt language in here that talks about compatible streetscape, you know, those types of terminologies, compatible colors. There is a dimension on the size of facility that an SCF can use. You know, so I think at a certain point, it's going to depend on the application of the code, and City Attorney Denherter needs to weigh in on this also. But if I'm standing on a street and looking down the street, and that street viewscape includes utility poles that are already there, I don't think another utility pole substantially changes the viewscape. And in that case, in my opinion anyway, I don't think that we have anything that's sideways with the proposed ordinance. If you're in a new subdivision somewhere, and there'd be utility poles or SCFs or some other piece of infrastructure that we're not yet aware of, then yeah, it would impact maybe how big a transformer in a brand-new subdivision could be. But I guess I'd have a question for Mr. Winandy. In most of the new subdivisions, you're using switchgear and...
Most of the new residential subdivisions would be underground.
Right.
Correct.
So I'm wondering if it would even be an issue unless we're talking about some larger new commercial area where most of this stuff would not be street frontage, and it would also be underground and switchgear sorts of situations, but...
I think you're going to run into a variety of circumstances, just depending where you're at. You know, industrial locations, certainly you're going to have more of an overhead type of construction in a lot of cases, not all. But in the, like Dave was referring to, new residential subdivisions, we've typically been putting underground infrastructure in those locations, so...
One of the goals that, as a work group, we were trying to meet was just to make sure that any new facility did not have a negative impact on the streetscape. I know that's a double negative, but, you know, it wouldn't be orange or pink or crooked or, you know, just go through your mind with what you would envision going down a street and how you would want it to look and what would look out of place. Light poles are everywhere. You know, when we drive down a street, we anticipate seeing a light pole. Trees, you know, other, you know, different facilities that may be associated with adjacent private development, with homes and things like that, different types of architecture. I think the goal of the code is to maintain an aesthetically pleasing streetscape in as much as we can define it. I don't think the goal of the code is to dramatically change the function of an electric utility in areas that we already have electric utilities doing their business.
So would there be another group that we're missing that would follow this? I know we have a sign ordinance and all that, but I just keep thinking, anything that sticks up in the air is going to have to fall under this?
So our sign ordinance would be a totally separate set of code because it's not a utility, and by definition, the utilities all kind of get lumped together in this instance, and signs would not be a utility. But they do have their own other set of federal regulations we had to go through when we adopted that ordinance a few years back, which was just as challenging, but we had a little more time.
So if I'm to understand kind of this debate, and I was just kind of clarifying with Ross, this is more aesthetic than it is really a foundational need for what that purpose is. I mean, if you have code that says a certain pole has to be a certain height, that would still be technically feasible because it's a safety issue versus just how it looks, right?
And technical feasibility is one of, in a lot of these, it says, "Whenever technically feasible, you must." Whenever technically feasible, you must.
Right.
So, you know, if the law prohibits any other way of doing it, it's not technically feasible at that point. But the, we are talking pretty much exclusively the aesthetic standards that have to be uniformly applied to other types of deployments within the right-of-way. So I'm at a loss for thinking of who else would be affected.
And if I may, that's one of my chief concerns.
Right.
Is the language that's in the proposal, is that truly going to be applied the same across all utilities? Or is that going to be viewed differently from one to the other, you know, in, within some limitations that you can? Those are all questions that come to mind for me when I'm reading through the language and trying to understand. I think it's a great concept, don't get me wrong, that we want to control that aesthetic perspective, you know, throughout town, but when it comes to how we operate as an electric utility, that's, could pose some issues.
It is tricky that the federal regulation paints with a really broad brush. It said, "You cannot discriminate against small cell facilities in terms of the aesthetic standards as, you know, relative to all the other utility deployments within the right-of-way moving forward." So we have to be, I think it's probably going to require some sit-down and working through this carefully to make sure this does work for you guys. And if it doesn't, that's on the list for things that we need to address moving forward as this gets molded into something that will work for everybody. And just for the benefit of those who weren't here earlier, we are on a tight timeframe based on our interpretation of the federal regulations. We have to have, if we're going to regulate aesthetic standards, we have to have an ordinance published by April 13th. The feds did not give us a lot of room to maneuver here. So the reality is, we put this into a condition we think will function okay, but there's still some unknowns, and there's a learning curve for all of us here. And we anticipate, perhaps almost immediately, moving into a position of revision of what we have now to address some of these unanticipated consequences, given the fact that we do have to rush this through.
Right. And I think as long as we're provided the opportunity for that input, I certainly wouldn't object to any action this evening, so...
Well, plus, your poles are all pre-existing, so they wouldn't be covered anyway.
Right.
But anything we want to do new, or if we want to replace, you know, two years from now or 10 years from now, I suppose you could technically consider those grandfathered, but if you're putting in taller, bigger, you know...
Can't you just bury it all, Brad?
Yeah, absolutely. But, so, thank you for the opportunity.
So if this was adopted and staff was provided no further direction, or there was no further discussion about amendments, which we know isn't going to be the case, I would tell Mr. Winandy that if he's in a new subdivision and he wants to put up a row of poles along the street with transformers, that that would not be in compliance with the code as adopted. However, if he's in an existing neighborhood that has those types of utilities already present in the viewscape, that some minor adjustments or changes to those would be able to be considered within the parameters of the ordinance. That would be with no further discussion. Of course, we're going to have further discussion, you know, if this is adopted, but that would be where I would be left interpreting it.
I guess I would just like to thank the staff and everyone involved in this process. I think this is clearly exemplified proactive, and really happy with our commission stepping ahead of and getting ready, because I think it'll look better when Verizon or any other services come and attempt to establish our community as a 5G community, would be more apt to come into our community because we're ready to go. So I thank you, everyone that has been involved in this process.
So any more commission discussion?
A quick question for you, Ross. When, so you mentioned the usefulness of having the fees sitting outside of this ordinance, so it'll be something that we'll be discussing as its own agenda item. But then, I'm curious about the liability insurance and the numbers that you see there. Would there also be usefulness in having that as its own standalone, or also maybe part of the fee structure that we adopt?
I would hesitate to do that because it's hard to plan if it's easy to kind of, I mean, if you're messing with the insurance rates, you're directly messing with their ongoing cost of operating these small cell facilities. You're kind of moving the bar, but... You're kind of moving the bar, but I don't think there's any technical reason you couldn't just state by ordinance that the minimum insurance limits will be set by ordinance or by resolution of the commission on a, you know, periodic basis or, you know, annual or bi-annual basis. I don't know, I just, setting fees is one thing. It's an ongoing administrative sort of thing the city does, but this is regulating how they need to operate. I just don't know if, this isn't probably a satisfactory answer, it just doesn't quite feel the same.
And I was just looking at Mitchell's ordinance. I think you'd mentioned that it was their attorney who kind of headed up the municipal lawyer league conversation for a while there.
Yep.
And in their ordinance, I'm looking at ordinance number 02018-18, they list that initial dollar amount as $5 million, whereas we're talking about just $2 million. And so something like that, you know, they have $5 million per occurrence for bodily injury. Why would they choose $5 million? I mean, because I can understand your logic of going with two, but what's...
I don't know what prompted them to come up with that number. I don't know if that came from the original that the consultant had in his initial draft. Honestly, I don't know the origin of the $5 million number. We, I, my recollection is, we brought it down from five to two because it's substantially higher than any other insurance requirement that we have anywhere else in the code, whether it be, you know, our taxicab ordinance or, it's a magnitude of at least a million higher than any other place. It just seemed high. I don't know if $5 million was designed to make sure there was enough insurance in the event that perhaps someday they discovered that these things were dangerous. I, I don't know. Sorry.
Ross, I guess if we're consistent between if our other ones are following what this dollar amount is, it seems like we'd want to be consistent. If our sign ordinance, like you said, whatever else has liability insurance, we'd want to be the same, so for this $2 million and $1 million.
$2 million doesn't give me nearly as much heartburn as five.
But normally, we only would have about two? In a, on all of our other ordinances? One or two? Okay.
Actually, I'm not certain there's any place that's higher than one. When I did a search, I couldn't find anything higher.
Any more commission discussion? Jeff and Sarah, if you could introduce yourselves again for the audience.
Again, I'm Jeff Farmer with Verizon Wireless. This is my counterpart, Sarah Muley. We again thank the commission for taking and engaging this issue preemptively. We are here to be a partner with the city for mutual benefit, realizing that your citizens are our customers. So there is some mutual benefit involved for both parties and we appreciate Ross's work on this, even in the last 24 hours. Again, we just became aware that the city was looking at this issue late last week, so we look forward to working with the city again in the near future. We did talk earlier about a few things and we welcome any questions that you might have. I would speak to the nondiscrimination issue that came up a minute ago. I think we have to be careful not to confuse that with discrimination of completely different utilities or completely different entities. What the FCC order speaks to is specific nondiscrimination for right-of-way access, for specific things like if you make wireless carriers trim trees, is that something you also make other utilities do? The FCC realizes that you can't compare a transformer box to a small cell. It's completely different equipment. This is a small cell facility ordinance specifically applying to small cells. The nondiscrimination comes in when you're talking about the specific items not related to equipment, because equipment is technology-specific. So in the reverse, we could go and look at a big transformer and say, well, we're going to put a small cell up that big, because that's not how it works. So we need to be very careful in not broadening that nondiscrimination that the FCC lays out, because that is specific. In certain jurisdictions, the FCC saw where certain utilities were getting favoritism. They would charge one thing for one, for right-of-way access, which right-of-way access is pretty universal. You have access to right-of-way, you file a right-of-way permit, you pay your fee. So in that instance, you can't discriminate and charge a wireless carrier more to have the same access. Now, when we're talking about different equipment, that's not a discrimination issue because you have completely different entities, completely different technology basis that you're working from. So this, and we haven't seen that interpretation come up before, because this ordinance, as drafted by primarily the League of Municipalities, addresses with small cell regulations and deals with those discrimination issues on those universal items, but the FCC specifically talks to aesthetics for small cells, not aesthetics for, you know, utility company transformers or gas company, anything other than wireless carriers, because that's what this is for. Do you have anything to add? Do you guys have any questions? We'd be happy to entertain any.
Yeah, timing-wise, can you go over, the videos we saw earlier said the technology's not there even, so you start putting up towers, but when will the average person start?
Sure.
Seeing this or who would use this right now if you were able to have it in Yankton?
Well, the city of Yankton is utilizing small cell technology today. If you drive straight down the street towards the school, you can stop at that stop sign and see a small cell. You can drive around the curve there and see a small cell in front of the, you know, in front of the hospital. So the technology is being utilized. I think what your question is, is when will 5G get here? And that's something we can't commit to at this time for Yankton or even surrounding cities. Universally, you know, you see it, like anything, it starts in the bigger cities and moves out from there. But in no way can we commit and say tonight that 5G is on its way, because we still have a lot of work to do with the infrastructure and the build-out of that fiber and those nodes that would allow us to then convert to 5G if it ever came to that point for the city. So a typical small cell takes anywhere from 18 to 24 months to light up, to turn on, from the time we have a permit or an agreement with the city to then develop a build plan, walk the city with your permitting people. So it takes a little bit of time just to get that infrastructure in. And then from that point, the 5G technology gets smaller and we can swap out equipment. So in reference to the video, that's what they're talking about, but we can't commit to that for Yankton at this time. But it's something that we want to work on to expand this technology or to have the capability to use it to offload our current capacity with our fast 5G system or 4G system.
So you said you're out of Omaha. Have they even started installing the network there yet?
We have a number of small cells in Omaha and surrounding communities, as in Iowa. We cover a lot of Iowa. Iowa's been very progressive about adapting small cell-friendly ordinances and working with carriers to bring in that new technology, because especially for rural areas, you know, it's an economic driver. It not only provides this fast new technology, but it provides it for a small community that, it's something you can get excited about. It also allows for the smaller rural areas to have the same technology as the cities. So eventually that will come, but we can't speak to that tonight.
We recognize this is an economic development issue for communities like ours, making sure our businesses are on the same playing field as larger cities. So if there are things we can do to help you come to our community, I think we would want to be open to that discussion.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate that and look forward to working with you guys.
Any more questions for Jeff and Sarah?
Yeah, so a quick question. With you or your team having been involved with the South Dakota Municipal League and I guess other leagues as well, I'm just curious about this general liability insurance topic again.
Sure.
Because was that something that has come up maybe, and you've probably been at other commission meetings or council meetings? Can you give us a little insight? What's being talked about?
So what I would say is, that is a model ordinance. Obviously, it's not going to fit every city. If you see a higher number, that might be key for a larger city that might be able to justify that. If you're only charging other right-of-way access providers or requiring the $1 million, then that's where the nondiscrimination might come in and say, well, you're effectively prohibiting small cells because you're requiring a greater amount for something that other access providers or access people in the right-of-way are required to put up. So it really depends on the jurisdiction, but I wouldn't say that, you know, I would defer to Ross as far as what your other codes say for this type of bond, but I wouldn't, I mean, I couldn't speak to other communities. I think Yankton needs to look at what Yankton does.
Yeah, and I'd also add that the league that was negotiated between industry, not only Verizon but other carriers, and Yvonne at the league was, you know, that was not necessarily, all parties weren't happy. That was just kind of when it got to the point that it was as good as it was going to get. So I wouldn't say it's, you know, 100% exactly what the league wants. It's not 100% what industry wants, but that's...
That's a compromise.
Yeah.
Jeff and Sarah, thank you for taking the time to help us with this process tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, when you speak about the resolution, we'd be happy to come back.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the commission on this item? All right, we don't have a motion. I think we all recognize we're probably going to be making some changes to this in the next year, so with that, do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Is that with amendments or the changes that...
It's Ross's changes are already in here.
All right, we have a motion to approve the ordinance with the changes Ross outlined in his presentation. Is there any more commission discussion?
Nathan?
Yep.
I'm going to pass due to conflict of interest. My spouse works for Northwestern.
Thank you. One last time, is there any public input on this item? All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your work on that. It's one of the deeper discussions we've had in a long time. All right, moving on to new business. Number one, consideration of memorandum 19-60 and resolution 19-14 to establish a small cell facility fee rate structure as provided by ordinance 1020, which we just approved.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Ross or Dave, did you want to outline what those fees will be for the public?
So there's one fee and one rate. The application fee for small cell facilities is proposed to be $200 per site with a cap of $500 for multiple-site applications. And the ongoing rate for SCF being in the right-of-way would be $100 per year.
So that $500 maximum, is that within a certain amount of time that those would be submitted or how does that work?
I would say that that's associated with a given application.
Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I was going to say, I had my microphone on. I'm like, did I miss something? Aye.
And with that, the motion passes. Number two, under new business, if we can get more mundane than small cell tower technology, consideration memorandum 19-62 regarding a bid award for liquid asphalt. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
One question. The memo doesn't address the increase from last year to this year. I just wondered if this is consistent pricing? Since we only had one bid.
The 2018 prices are listed in the paragraph below the bid, the current bid amounts. There was an increase in the AC grade cement by $139.44 per ton. And we did contact this supplier questioning that increase and it was partially due to increase in oil prices and then there was a supply facility that was caught fire and burned, which influenced this price for that cement.
Thank you.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Lozier, would you like to go on this?
Sure, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Yes, aye. And that one passes as well, thank you. Number three, under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-61 regarding a bid award for bituminous mix. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Unless I'm mistaken, we misspelled bituminous on the agenda this evening. We had an extra "i." Just want to note that. Not blaming anyone. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number four, under new business is a public hearing and consideration of resolution 19-13, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Yankton Economic Development Revenue Bonds for the Mount Marty College Series 2019 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. What is your pleasure?
So of approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would Amy like to explain what we're doing to the public? You guys misinterpreted what I said.
Honorable mayor, members of the commission, Mount Marty College has requested that the city issue $15 million in economic development revenue bonds to help fund their proposed fieldhouse project, which I think we all have heard about in the public and we're all very excited to be a part of. The ability for us to aid a local economic development project like this using revenue bonds was adopted by South Dakota Legislature back in 1964, I believe. It allows us to become a pass-through, really, entity for the issuance of bonds with funding going to Mount Marty College and the payments of the debt service also being solely response, the sole responsibility of Mount Marty College. This debt does not affect our borrowing capacity in any way and nor does it make us legally bound to pay any debt service on any failure on the part of Mount Marty College. Really, the reason this benefits Mount Marty is allowing them to gain a slightly lower interest rate, approximately 20%, and it benefits investors by allowing them to earn interest tax-free. The city really benefits because we know that when Mount Marty benefits, the community benefits and we're supporting a local institution and economic development, which is a driver for our community. Also, I think we can all say what an important impact Mount Marty has on our community and how important it is to have an institution of higher learning in the community for our health and just our general population. We benefit in so many ways by having Mount Marty there on the hill. We have issued these types of economic development bonds at least twice that we are aware of. I believe one was for the Yankton Medical Clinic and the second was for Alumex Sapa Now Hydro. now Hydro, Heedro, lots of names there. But we have done this before as a public entity. We have consulted with the attorney Todd Meyer Henry of Meyer Henry Sargent, and he's been working as a bond counsel for this and for Mount Marty, and there's, um, information attached there. So, um, really, it's, it's a, it's a tool that only governmental entities can help utilize. So the other option for Mount Marty would be to request this of the county. We did a press release with Dr. Marcus Long and sat down with the media, explained question, explained this, this structure to them, talked to them through this, so that it could be out in the media, so that if anyone was concerned, they could come to us and talk to us. I have not heard anything. Al, I don't know if you've heard anything from the public on this?
No, I've not heard anything from the public, so. I would point out that Todd Meyer Henry is here, and when he started, we didn't have 5G. We now do, so. But if you would like to add anything to tonight's discussion?
Amy did a wonderful job. This is just a requirement that the federal government for tax-exempt bonds put in place. They didn't want, uh, whether it be private companies for industrial development bonds or 501(c)(3)'s to issue their own debt. The federal government said if we're gonna give them a benefit of tax-exempt interest, we would like to have, so to speak, a watchdog, or the local governmental entity determine whether this is a type of project that they'd want to go forward. And in our state, cities, counties, and then also our state authorities could actually issue these types of bonds also. So, other than that, Amy did a wonderful presentation. Can I hire you to come to every one of these?
What does pay?
Todd, thank you for your, for putting together the Q and A regarding this subject. It's very helpful. We do have some representatives of Mount Marty here tonight. Is there anything you would like to say to the commission before we move on?
Chris is leaving me hanging here. I'm Tabitha Lickness, the Vice President of Finance at the college, and Chris Cassin, our Athletic Director. And other than thanking the commission for being willing to get this on their agenda and consider it for vote, obviously, we know, everyone knows a lot about the project. We're very excited about it. This'll be a great vehicle for us to finance in this way.
Can we say anything about groundbreaking date yet?
Not quite yet. Next month.
All right.
How about that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any commission questions of Chris and Tabitha? Thank you very much. All right, would anyone else in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
I will, because I work for Mount Marty abstaining.
Was that an "I" off? Ivon?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye. I am abstaining. Thank you.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Verdi?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Past the one-hour point, apparently that gives us the giggles and our, so excuse us, everyone. Number five, under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-64 and resolution 19-16 regarding an emergency declaration related to the recent flood event. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, is there anything you wanna say about this item?
No, other than it's helpful when we're looking for FEMA and funds and these types of, and hazard mitigation grants, I'll be speaking of that in a minute.
Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Hoffner?
Aye.
Ivon?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Verdi?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Number six, under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-65, which is a discussion regarding the preliminary damage report of public infrastructure, again, related to the recent flooding event.
Okay, stick with me, everybody. Nothing for you to do here, just to listen a little bit. I wanted to give you a preliminary report on where we are with everything that happened in the last couple of weeks. I, I did pass out to you a draft of, um, just a preliminary, um, impact from the floodwaters, which took place Wednesday, the 14th. As of 7:51 this evening, uh, there have been federal disaster declarations in Nebraska and Iowa. There has not been one yet in South Dakota. I'm thinking, without any knowledge, but I'm thinking that perhaps what's, the holdup is some of the flooding that's yet to come tonight and tomorrow in other parts of our state, and perhaps, um, the amount of counties that have damaged then will reach the point or threshold in dollar amount where, uh, the, uh, the president would follow through then with Kristi Noem's federal, or statewide declaration. So we are waiting for that. I will say that we were successful in the sense that we had no loss of life and no injury, which is, um, much better placed than some of our neighbors are in, so we can be thankful for that. We can also be thankful that the Marn Creek Flood Hazard Mitigation Trail, and I'm calling it that on purpose, that's really what it is called, and we wanna be careful with vernacular. We've all come to love it as just a recreation trail, but it is a maintenance trail for flood hazard. It did its job, so without that piece of infrastructure there, we would be talking about a whole lot of different types of scenarios, a lot worse scenarios than we're talking about. Um, we, we, the main damage suffered was in that flood hazard mitigation maintenance trail and at our wastewater plant. We had some minimal damage to streets, uh, and we're still inspecting bridges, culverts, some slight damage to our parks, but not really significant, so we're very fortunate there. I will say we are not out of the woods yet. We still have frost in the ground, and, uh, for those of you who've been keeping an eye on the trail, you know that as frost comes out, uh, we're losing more and more of our banks along the Marn Creek, so that's a little bit scary. Uh, we also have just started spring, so we could have a lot of rain events yet. We know that James River is going to crest, I think, today or maybe early tomorrow morning, and, uh, that could impact, uh, water levels in the area. We're yet, we're yet to be known what's gonna completely happen on the Missouri River, and we have a snow melt out west to still walk through, so, um, I'm not gonna say I'm not concerned, because the Monday night before the flooding took vent on, on Wednesday, last Wednesday, I said, "I'm not that concerned about flooding." So I'm not gonna go so far as to say that. We're gonna keep a watchful eye on all those things. I would say our damage estimate is, is well over $10 million just in town. When you look at the amount of bank stabilization we're gonna have to do, um, we're gonna be in this for the long haul. So I'm really watching with bated breath and looking frequently online and on my phone for a national disaster declaration, because, uh, we are gonna need some FEMA assistance to get through that. There are three different forms of FEMA funding. There's public assistance funding, individual disaster fund assistance, and hazard mitigation grants. None of those are accessible without a national federal disaster being declared. Uh, the folks that have personal damage, we encourage them to call 211 and talk to the folks at 211 about the level of damage they have. The more damage that's documented in the state or in the area, the more is likely to have that individual disaster assistance program that individuals can apply to. So there's no guarantee that any of these programs will be made available, uh, but there's more of a guarantee if we can show more damage as a community. So we ask folks to, to call 211 and to call 211 if they have needs, uh, that they're not being met right now, or they need some volunteer assistance, those types of things. There are some other funding options available. I've been told that before the end of session, the state budgeted $500,000 for disaster relief. James Valley Watershed has grant funding. They may be flexible in what they're typically funding, given the events that has happened lately. Goed has some funding available, and, and perhaps, uh, we'll be able to utilize or utilize current funding a little differently to help us with our bank stabilization. And EDA funds might be a option for especially our wastewater treatment plan. Um, so just to give you an idea on how much we were impacted, I'm gonna direct your attention when Dwayne's ready to put up some, um, what I'm calling sliders or graphics of, um, Marn Creek and how different the bank has changed. Dwayne, would you like me to get the light? Will that be helpful? He's got it there. So as he goes through these, you will see, um, the severe loss in the bank that we've had.
So... There we go. Excuse me. Uh, what you see is the area directly behind the street shop. This is the 2017 pictometry flight that the city did. And earlier this, last week, we had, um, Stockwell fly this area with a drone, and we used some new technology to create a new overlay of the aerial imagery to kinda show the difference in the creek transition, pre-flood and post-flood. So as I move the slider across, you'll be able to see the changes in the creek and what's happened since the disaster. I've got a couple of areas that we'll kinda look through. This is the area directly, uh, south of the bridge. And then directly adjacent to Burley Street Bridge. One of the nice things that this was able to do is give us a pretty good outline of what's changed. We did some preliminary calculations, um, about volume changes in the, in the southern reaches of the creek. Our initial numbers are pretty, uh, significant as far as how much change is actually taking place in the waterway, how much wider it is overall. We haven't done any volumetric calculations based on how much deeper it is or how much more additional carrying capacity, but just the overall width of the channel, um, across the top, what the banks have done is, as you can see, pretty substantial. Our plan is to continue to do this through the rest of the creek. It'll give us a good tool in, in helping identify those areas as far as the damage, what we need to do for recovery, and, and kinda moving forward and communicating those problems to FEMA and other funding agencies.
And it wasn't just the bank, of course. There's those trail panels, uh, the lighting that's along the trail. There's scouring underneath some of the existing, where we do have trail, there's some panels that are scoured underneath, uh, which is why, which is why we're saying we don't know exactly how safe the trail is right now, and we're encouraging folks and actually, um, telling them, you know, that the trail is closed and accessing the trail is trespassing. Uh, we wanna make sure it's safe. We anticipate we'll be opening some sections of the trail later on this spring and summer, but until we have a full assessment, it's not safe to do so. So, you know, as we look to throughout those images, we're getting closer and closer to some critical infrastructure, so definitely part of our, um, applications and requests for funding will be to do more bank stabilization near the Public Works Building, uh, near and around our Collector Well, uh, securing our exposed water main, uh, and exposed sewer main as well. So, um, I think there, the answer is assessment, rebuilding, and enhancement of what we have. The wastewater plant, um, we, we don't think about because that day we were all able to push a button down and things went away, so, uh, but we had a lot of serious, uh, damage and a lot of serious situations at the wastewater plant. Fortunately, our community was helpful, particularly our high-volume users into not, uh, utilizing as much water so we could keep up. I've been told today that we did bypass 2.5 million gallons of wastewater, um, and we pumped over 500 gallons. So that's about 3 million gallons of wastewater that did not go into our sewers in town and into your basements because of really what was around-the-clock work by Kyle and Tanner Hansen and his staff for a number of days. However, uh, we do, we did experience some problems, and, uh, we need to really think about that in terms of, uh, how we are addressing the way we wanna move forward at our wastewater plant. I think it's time that we really do that conditional assessment of our facility, identify what critical equipment we need to include in our capital, capital improvement plan in the short term, um, to really, um, figure out, um, if we need to upgrade a current facility or if we're at a point where we should start looking at a new facility. So I think that that is very important to talk about, so thinking about things like secondary pumps, our, an emergency power source, uh, submersible dry pumps. If any of those would have failed, which we came very, very close, the 3 million gallons of wastewater that is no longer with us would have been still in our basements and in our streets, and, um, it was a critical situation, so I think people don't maybe realize that, but, um, fortunately, nothing broke down. One shining spot is the fact that our new, uh, our new lift station that was just completed and helped out with EDA funding from the 2011 fund, 2011 flood worked very, very well and probably saved us a lot of grief as well. But there are some pieces of infrastructure that we definitely need to replace short-term there, um, as well as start thinking about our long-term assessment for the wastewater plant. This type of event brings that even closer to, uh, closer to home. So as we go through our needs, of course, we need to assess the damage to the Marn Creek Flood Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Maintenance Trail. We've already told Stockwell to start moving ahead with that. We have an engineering department, however, we do not have an hydraulic engineer on staff, and that needs to be part of our bank stabilization. I'll be bringing a contract forward with you for Stockwell next time we meet, however, I've told him to go ahead and move ahead. We only have after the, uh, event has ended and the declaration declared 30 days for assessment. That isn't a long time when you talk about doing all the hydraulics and engineering, so I've told him, "Go ahead, and I'll beg for forgiveness if I need to," but I think that's the right move to do, to, uh, get some folks involved to help us assess really where we are and where do we need to put tourniquets this, yet this summer, and then what can we phase out over time. Also, I think there should be some consideration of installing, uh, some type of flood hazard mitigation maintenance trail in the corridors on the west side of town. Uh, we are not currently managing that the same way we do, uh, in the center of town, and it's probably time to think about that as we grow to the west. Bridge inspections, uh, we do those every other year. We're gonna ask DOT if we can speed up and our cycle and have those inspected this year, so that we can make sure those are all in good shape going forward. Assessing the conditions at the wastewater plant, I've asked HDR to, uh, put forward a contract on what that would be, um, what that would cost us to evaluate, "Hey, here are pieces of equipment that are really needing to be replaced short-term, so if an event like this happens again, the outcome, um, you're more secure in your outcome than we were last week." Also, we're assessing damages to local streets, and we're also working on, uh, data image collection through Collector GIS, and I'll have, um, Dwayne show you that a little bit too. So one of the great things about, uh, having GIS, uh, people on staff is, um, I had this idea, we were gonna go out and start taking pictures of everything with our smartphones and then writing down on pieces of paper, but, uh, they put together a really nice way for us to view damage, assess it, and have a real-time map. So basically, we all have an app on our tablet or on our phone, and we've distributed technology to people. They can find a point where there's damage, take a picture of it, put some notes in saying, you know, "This is a culvert. It's been scoured here and needs to be replaced," and approximately this much money, so we could be able to hand that map over to emergency management or FEMA when we get to that point. to that point. Do you have that map handy, Dwayne?
Yeah, as Amy mentioned, the technology allows you to use a Collector app for the GIS system. It will allow you to either place the point manually, use a line, use a polygon to display the feature. We've chosen to flag some of this stuff for additional follow-up. Maybe it was a Parks and Rec employee or another city staff member that's identified it and maybe they want Adam's office to go back and take a look at it. I pulled up a couple of examples. This is the area directly north of the mall, adjacent to 23rd Street, just a point along the trail. Flag for further review was done by Parks and Rec. The notes say the trail's been undermined for Adam to review it. They're able to attach photos. You can attach a cost estimate, a map, a drawing. Here's a photo of that location, kind of outlining what they saw in the field. You know, definitely looks like something that's going to have to be addressed. County's using a tool very similar in nature, using the same type of technology. Area for bank that needs riprap. As we kind of go through the creek, one of the other things that we did, we partnered with emergency management. They did videos of the entire stretch of the creek and that's something we posted on the city's YouTube channel. It's an opportunity to kind of get an overview of the damage along the creek and we'll be able to use those tools going forward, not only for identifying the damage, but also for showing a high-water mark and for future planning.
Thanks, Dwayne. So upfront, we have, are going to have some costs, definitely, even if FEMA funds and when FEMA funds are available, they're likely not going to cover the extent of the damage that we have and we're likely going to have a match. We'll definitely have upfront engineering costs. So tentatively, as you know, we have a small budget in the Marn Creek budget, I think 30,000 or so for property acquisition, which is not even going to come close to what we're going to need to spend to start getting a handle on things. So taking a look at the budget and as much as it's not going to feel good to do this, I'm going to recommend that we utilize some of our funds that we've allocated towards our active transportation plan for a number of years to start working on engineering and starting to put our flood hazard mitigation maintenance trail back into place. I realize that we had prioritized areas of town and we still will try to work with property owners and to work on those priority areas, but you know, I think this is also a priority area for transportation, non-motorized transportation in our community. So I would, I think we need to focus some of those funds in that way. Also, in talking with Adam, we already have a number of our street projects awarded and out the door for 2019. One of them that we don't have done or out the door yet is Riverside Drive Broadway to Green. So Jake, I'm sorry, I think that's one we're going to push another year so that we can afford some engineering costs. Also, that frees up some costs in our utility departments, some budgeted funds in our utility department so that they can work with HDR on focusing on some of our wastewater plant needs in the short term. Those might be reimbursable, those all might be reimbursable by FEMA. Again, there is a chance FEMA doesn't declare a national disaster or there is a chance that it declares and we're don't, we only are getting half of these things paid for. So we do have to find a way. So we have to make a little adjustment and change our plans from going on family vacation to staying home and focusing on what we have to take care of, I guess, so to speak. The next 30 to 60 days is really going to be critical, as I said, after the event is considered closed. We have 30 days to collect data and then really, then the work starts. You know, we've been working closely with District 3, but we'll have grant writing to do. We'll have our own cleanup to do. We'll also have mitigation to do. So on top of all our normal responsibilities, we're going to have a big year in terms of addressing all those issues. We will, as I said, open up portions of the trail as we see fit and as we see safe. But the reality is some non-critical functions that we might be able to do on a normal year, we may not be able to do this year because we may need to be working on pursuing funding, et cetera. I can foresee perhaps a need for some of us or some elected officials or some staff to need to go to regional EDA offices or regional FEMA offices or to make a trip to Washington DC if a grant request is appropriate. So that might be coming down the pike as well and might be something we have to ask you for. So again, the next year is going to be a challenging one for staff and for elected officials and for newly-elected officials who will come on to a big mess on their hands. But I think sometimes with heartbreak and loss comes, you know, that adjustment of the new normal and we really can't grow if we stay the same. So I think this challenge will help us grow and with your guys' leadership, great city staff, I think we can keep swimming. That was a little more true than I knew it was going to be when I said it in January. So I'm happy to answer questions if I can and we have staff people here who are really up close with all the damage, so they might be able to help you as well if you have questions.
Amy, I would have one and if staff can answer this. What, like, what order, how do we prioritize what has to be done, in what order and when?
Sure. So I think in terms of prioritizing, we're looking at, oh, let's take care of the worst first. And we don't know exactly where the worst parts of the trail are, that's why we closed the whole thing. We've told Stockwell and HDR, you know, move ahead, start making assessment. We'll ask the commission upcoming to approve contracts for their work with them and if that's not something you want to do, then we'll have to work with them otherwise. But I think the critical infrastructure, the wastewater plant, of course, is a top priority, but also the creek is as well because we're going to lose more bank and some of that bank is near abutting homes and businesses and other infrastructure. So those are really our worst situations. We've had our engineers already look at the bridges and roads and they don't see anything that looks so compromised that, you know, that they're saying we have to right away fix. So we do want to do more fall inspections, but I think our focus is wastewater plant and the hazard mitigation trail.
Amy, in regards to the trail itself, it probably goes without saying that Marn Creek showed what it can give us today, but I imagine we'll reconsider automatically where that trail is positioned. I mean, it is where it has failed. I imagine it just makes sense to widen it out or wherever.
Yeah, there's places where it will need to be relocated and some of that property that we once owned is now gone. It's in the creek. Some of the property was on an easement, some of the, there's places now where I don't know where the trail is going to go, so we might have to look at reconfiguring. We might need to look at, you know, moving that large sections elsewhere and I'm not even sure yet what we'll lose. As we've been out evaluating it more and more each day, with more frost that goes out, it changes the bank. So it's kind of almost, makes you nauseous to watch it because you don't really know where the worst case is yet. But yeah, there's definitely going to be some, some big changes there. I think it's important from an infrastructure standpoint. I didn't see its value really until beyond it being valued as a trail until Wednesday and then I saw really what, how important it is to have that for our community, so.
We have engineers look at these things. Are they also working with climatologists? Because we, you know, if we look at their most recent climate assessment, they are predicting more precipitation in this part of the country, more extreme weather events.
I'm not aware that they're working with climatologists. However, my standpoint is going to be, let's build it for, let's build it for the even worst-case scenario and let's overbuild it if we can afford to. And we have to, of course, be reasonable with costs, but I think we just saw the power of water and Mother Nature and its instability, so I think it's important that we think about the fact that we're living in a time where, you know, we're seeing some extreme temperatures and extreme cases and we have to be ready for that. Dave looked like he wanted to mention, he was dying to tell you something.
Sorry, just wanted to keep you here another half hour. So with the original construction of the flood hazard mitigation trail, there's a criteria for how close it had to be to the creek because its purpose was to provide, you can't say all-weather access because it wouldn't have worked last Wednesday, but, but access to the actual channel itself in as, as much of the year as possible. And that was the genesis for us getting it funded the last time. So I imagine that our flood hazard mitigation component of this for future trail construction is going to have many of the same criteria. So specifically, one of those areas that Dwayne showed, seemed like we put the trail fairly close to the creek last time and if you were going to just do it again in a, in a location to keep the trail around as long as possible, you might not put it there. You might back it off of the creek a little ways from where it was. But if we'd have done that, it wouldn't have been eligible for funding because it wouldn't have served its purpose, which was to provide access for equipment to the creek. So as you, as we see design coming forward over the next several years, those are the types of things that are all involved in choosing that location. There's going to be some locations where we need to acquire additional property too, property we don't have, have right now.
Yeah. I mean, if this were to happen, there's never a good time for this type of thing to happen. But if, if it were to happen, we have a really good staff right now and I feel really confident with folks we have that we're going to be able to access as much funding that is made available to us. And I know the commission does, knows this because we, we've already received your appreciation and we thank you for that. The public should really be aware of that. While their basements were filling up with water, our staff was out helping to make sure people were secured, helping to make sure people got home safely from school, helping to make sure that people weren't crossing over barricades while they knew at their own homes, they had trouble. So I think that speaks to the quality of people we have and the selflessness in their view of public service. So I'll thank the staff again for their hard work and their dedication and their just clear picture that we were going to stay here and whatever, do whatever we could do to keep our infrastructure and our citizens secure during that time. So I was really proud of how everyone responded as well.
Yeah, I will add, I was in the room with many of the people sitting here tonight at the incident command throughout the event and was very impressed with how calm they were and how thorough they were in thinking out of all, all the scenarios that might occur and what we need to be prepared for. They did an excellent job and when it comes to the public, I've heard nothing but praise of how our city employees responded to that event, so thank you.
Thank you. Again, no action, Mayor, just an update.
What, what kind of response have we gotten at the transfer station?
Um, I don't know if you happen to have numbers, Adam. I know we've had a lot of people come through.
I don't have any recent numbers. There has been a lot of drop-off at the transfer station and we've actually been making more trips to Vermillion than usual with our trailers, so there is a lot coming in.
We can get a-
And we are documenting it all and tracking that.
Yeah, we can get a tonnage and number to the commission over email.
I will say, I've also heard gratitude for that process and how smoothly it's going out there. So thank you to you and your staff for making sure that goes as well as it can for everyone dealing with the aftermath.
Thank you.
Amy, I think at our strategic planning, we talked about whether or not we would have, I guess, we've done in years past, which is like a sneak peek CIP meeting, like in the April timeframe. Do you see a usefulness of us doing that anytime soon?
Um, you know, we talked about not doing that the same way we've done it in the past. I think what we're going to see is a lot of the capital from this year pushed to next year, so I don't know that it's any more or less valuable, but if the commission so chooses, we certainly can do that. It's up, it's up to you guys. I think we're definitely have our hands full at that time trying to prepare for possible funding requests and opportunities, but if the commission feels like they'd like to revisit and reprioritize, we certainly can do that.
I think if you can just keep us kind of apprised what you're thinking as we go through the process, that would be fine for me.
Okay.
I think you've done a good job so far of preparing us for that eventuality.
Okay, thank you.
We still have a couple items to go for our warriors in the room. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-66 and resolution 19-15 regarding a request by Rock and Rumble for special events parking ordinance number 933 to be in place during Rock and Rumble on July 26th through 27th, 2019 and a suspension of the alcohol consumption ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-69 regarding a request from the U.S. Bowling Conference for a youth bowling tournament to be held in Yankton during March and April. What is your pleasure? I think we have some discussion here.
Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, Jan, so if you could come to the podium.
We waited all night. Let's hear from you.
Yeah, thank you for being so patient with us. You're requesting $2,500, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Johnson.
And can you tell us a little bit about what that would go toward?
When the, the, Yankton Bowl hasn't had tournaments since the 70s until 2017 when we had the open tournament because we now have a proprietor and an association that we feel is ready to handle these tournaments. So this year, we have the youth tournament. And when you have the youth tournament, you are required to provide them a participation gift bag. In years past from other towns, those participation gift bags or whatever, one time was a water bottle filled with candy, the other time was a string backpack filled with coupons. Well, I didn't want Yankton to be that kind of town. I wanted Yankton to be that town that everybody's going to aspire to live up to. So Jim Palmer, the proprietor at Yankton Bowl and I, we sat down and we talked. We want to give these youth that are coming to bowl, items that they can use when they bowl. So we have ball wipes, ball tape, ball cups, cleaners, there's 15 or 16 different things that are going into it. But with that, of course, there is cost. And each of these bags, our participation gift bags are going to cost roughly $15 apiece, if not more. So we will have between, last year, there was 565 youth that participated in this tournament. We are hoping for that many, if not more. So we are planning on 600. That's $9,000. We have 325 adult bowlers at Yankton Bowl, but we also have Tyndale, so we have roughly 500 bowlers. And for the most part, we have funded all of this on our backs, on the bowler's backs. Right, Chris? Chris knows my hand comes around the bowling alley quite often with it out doing some fundraising, so. So that's why we're asking the commission for some help because we do have 600 youth coming here over four weekends and when you have a youth, it's not just going to be the youth. You know that mom or dad or mom and dad, grandmas and grandpas, aunts and uncles, they're all going to come stay, they're all going to come watch their children bowl. And they're going to spend money in our hotels, spend money in our restaurants and hopefully money in our stores. And so that's why we're asking for a little bit of help of trying to get these tournaments going on a rotating basis.
Um, Jan, of the 600 bowlers that you're talking about, how many of them would be or where would they be coming in from? Where's the majority of them from?
They come from all over the state. They actually, we have teams from Aberdeen, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Spearfish, you know, they come from all over the state. Any program or any bowl- Any program or any bowling center that has a youth league can come bowl in the state tournament, so they will come from all over.
You also have a jamboree coming here in June, correct?
Yes, we do.
And then there's, you say there's another tournament coming in 2021?
Yes.
And so would this funding help with that tournament as well? Is that what you're thinking?
Um, at this point, probably not. This is basically to try and get this tournament up and coming, you know, up and going. We may be back in 2021 to ask again. We may at that point, because we've been setting money aside. Each bowler that comes to bowl has to pay sanction dues and we've set aside a dollar from each bowler since 2013, 2014, because we knew these tournaments were coming, to try and help offset some of these costs. But at $500 a year, it takes a long time to get up to the money that we need.
Is there any more commission discussion or any more questions for Jan? And then does anyone have a motion?
Quick question, Jan, if we were to approve this here tonight?
Yes.
Um, I'm just curious, would you then be interested in coming back and talking to us about how successful it was? You know, I, there's some numbers that you put in here, approximately 500 to 600 youth, right? And then obviously the chamber's guesstimate of, you know, something similar to what happened last year, you know, 2.5 million, $4 million coming into the, the community or generated within the community. So would you be interested in coming back?
I can come back and give you the, the numbers, yes.
And what would be an appropriate timeframe then?
Um, at this point, once the tournament is done, it usually takes us about two weeks to 30 days, two to four weeks to finalize the numbers and things like that. So the last tournament is, date for the tournament is April 27th and 28th. I could probably come back mid-May.
I'd move approval with funding to come out of the BBB.
Second.
We have a motion in seconds or any more commission discussion?
I think it's a small amount to pay for the, there no doubt we'll get a substantial amount back from BBB, but is there a way we can funnel this through CVB or, you know, our, our events or something? It seems like that it's, that this could be done, you know, through a CVB. I don't know if that's possible to funnel it through there or not.
I think they did apply for the CVB grant.
For the open tournament?
Yeah.
In 2017 and received five, 500? I think it was only 500, it was $500, I think, at that point.
And I think they only-
And it was a one-time thing.
Yeah, they fund one-time money. I mean, we could contribute the funds to CVB and ask CVB to write the check out, but I, I don't know, without talking to Casey and Carmen, I don't, wouldn't feel comfortable suggesting that.
Jan, so the 500 to 600 youth, is that, is that every weekend of the tournament or those, that's spread throughout the month?
That's, that's over the four weekends of the tournament. There will be a total, there's 1,234 registered youth bowlers in South Dakota right now and out of those 1,234, approximately, like last year in Sioux Falls, it was 565 youth came and participated in the tournament. And so that's what we're hoping for this year's, we'll have that many, if not more, over the four weekends.
Any more commission discussion?
Do you have the capability of doing, say, like exit interviews? Some kind of a form or a website participants can log into or parents, participants can log into, just to kind of give an idea of what they did while they were in town? Some kind of a questionnaire or something like that? It'd be nice, it'd be nice to know some actual real documented numbers on that kind of stuff.
It is probably something because as long as this local association manager on the state association manager, so we probably could work out something with like Survey Monkey or something like that and send a survey out to those that participated and see what kind of response we could get to find out what they did while they were in town. It's a hard time too because it's end of March, part of April. The cart tracks isn't open yet and Laser Barn might be, I think, if we talk to them, but.
I think is part of that, related to that and what Commissioner Furtig was saying, would be interesting to say, how many nights did you stay? How many meals did you eat out? How much would you estimate you spent shopping?
Mm-hmm.
On the other? Could be kind of cool.
Yep, definitely.
If, if there was a request to put in a flyer that had to do with a, I don't know, an upcoming airshow?
(laughing).
And it was provided to you at no extra cost?
That could probably work because we have the participation bags to stuff on Thursday. Can you get me like 125 or 150 by Thursday? Okay. Or even Friday or Saturday, I suppose we could hurry up and stuff them in while we're handing them out.
I have to say, there's a lot of local leadership on, for the US Bowling Congress here in Yankton, so it's impressive and I'm sure you've probably had something to do with that, your leadership, so.
Well, I'd like to think so. They brought me on in 2015, so I've done it statewide since 2015, locally since 2005, 2006.
All right, any more commission discussion? Anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 I bow.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda tonight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
(laughing).
We almost made it to nine o'clock.